Evening, everyone. Welcome to our work session here on Wednesday, October 28th. And with that, we're going to start off with a presentation from Paychex, but I'm going to turn it over to Scott to give everybody the lay of the land as to what's going on.
Thank you. We have one hour to present from 6 till 7. And I'd like to thank the guests who are here to present, John, who was here in person. And I know he'll do some intros as well, so thank you and welcome to Orchard Park.
Yeah, so thank you. All right, well, thank you very much. So, my name is Jeff Lohner. I've been with Paychex 25 years, coming up in July. Done this for a very long time, brought on over 3,000 businesses to Paychex in my career. So, appreciate the opportunity for, you know, Scott and the town inviting Paychex in to, you know, take a look and evaluate the payroll process here for the town. So, over the last couple of months, I've had several conversations with a couple of individuals within the town. Conversations have been with Lisa, as well as, oh my gosh, I'm going to freeze here for a second. I apologize.
Trish.
Trish, excuse me.
Yeah, I'm here.
I'm sorry, Trish. I apologize. I didn't mean to leave you out there. So, there's a lot of different processes that are going on right now within the town. And what I wanted to stress is Paychex has been doing payroll for over 53 years. We have over 750,000 clients onboard with Paychex. So, what that means is that we have a lot of different scalable solutions that can come into play at any point in time in this scenario for the town of Orchard Park. So, really what our goal is tonight is to give you insight, give you overview of how Paychex can hopefully partner up and provide solutions for the town as we move forward. So, Juan, do you want to hit the next and go to the next slide for me? So, with me today, I've got Juan Bedola. He's been with Paychex 25 years as well. Juan is going to be giving you the overview of what the Paychex Flex system is all about. We're going to talk about a couple of different products tonight. For time purposes, we have one hour. So, we're going to really try to stay on top of our agenda that we have based on conversations that I've had with some of your colleagues here. And if we start to go awry, or we start to, you know, maybe go in a different direction, I'm really trying to wrangle everybody back in so we stay on task and we get these pieces covered and shown. So, his goal tonight is to walk through the demonstration and show you what the technology is all about. I've also got my colleague Leanne Buchko with us. She's also, oh, she's not doing Paychex 25 years. She's got 25 years' worth of experience within the world of HR. She's been a Paychex employee here for several years as well. So, Leanne and I partner up together, and Leanne brings some of the HR insight and presence into our solution as well. So, she'll be kind of highlighting some other areas that we could hopefully plug in and play to provide additional support for you. So, thank you again for having us. So, Juan, do you want to go to the next slide for me, please? There we go. So, I wanted to put this slide up front because I think this is an important piece of Paychex. So, Paychex really prides ourselves on the service model. And the service model starts in the beginning. And what that means is that every business, every industry is very different and unique to what their needs are. So, what Paychex does is reassign an implementation project manager to our account. So, what that means is that we have someone that works hands-on with whether it's Trish or Lisa, Scott, whomever, to really understand and develop that calendar to get you from A to B. And what A to B means is right now, you're at A, B, you want to be, you know, up and going with Paychex. So, really, the implementation project managers to oversee the project, making sure that whether it's time and attendance, or payroll, or HR, that we're hitting those key dates and we're getting the town to where they need to be based on all the different services and products that we're going to discuss here tonight. With those individuals, we've got implementation consultants. So, these individuals are specialized in time and attendance, payroll, HR, onboard, and all the different facets that Paychex can bring to the table. We have different partners that align with you to make sure that we're building those customized solutions to the town of Orchard Park at this point. Leanne, did you want to talk for a second about the HR business partner?
Sure, absolutely. So, from, I'm hoping you can hear me okay. So, from the HR side, clients definitely lean on us to really get that dedicated support. We have those professional, reachable, knowledgeable HR professionals that support our clients. And that solution is really customized based on what you need at the town. So, you know, we take some time, we do an initial assessment to understand what leadership needs, what the town needs, so we create that package for you. And then we create an action plan moving forward. So, you know, as we're kind of looking at different projects that you might be completing or, you know, things that you might be trying to roll out, that HR VP is there to support you and make sure that you have everything you need. We're going to dig a little bit deeper into some of the items that we can do, but for now, that's a, that's kind of a high-level overview for you.
Perfect. Thank you. And then from an ongoing service perspective, one of the nice things that Paychex has is we've got 24/7, 365, all stateside service, and that is our service model. So, you have a dedicated person that knows you, knows your account, and this would be the go-to person if there's questions or issues that arise with maybe payroll, or you're looking to add additional reporting needs, or if something comes up and you just need to talk things through, you have a designated individual service consultant that is assigned to the town, which I think is also a very important piece as you start to evaluate moving forward. So, again, just want to talk real quick about that. Juan, do you want to hit the next slide for me? So, lastly, before we get into the demo, I wanted to put a different slide up here just to show you all the different areas that Paychex could come in and possibly assist with. In my conversation with Lisa and Trish, there's a lot of different areas that we can help improve from a payroll and/or a benefit perspective. But the areas that we're going to discuss tonight are going to be the new hire onboarding. And what that means is that when you bring a new employee in, how do you get them into the system, all the paperwork that kind of follows that. We're going to talk a little bit about the HR technology and the HR consulting piece. You'll hear a little bit more from Leanne here in just a couple of minutes. We're then going to hop into time and attendance. We'll spend quite a bit of time in this, trying to understand, trying to show you what our solutions are that surround that. And then lastly, we'll finish things up on the payroll and the tax services. And this will just show you everything that Paychex Flex is all about. But some of the other pieces in here, as the town grows, as your needs change, these are different areas that we could certainly come in and plug in and assist with as you go. So, with that said, I'm going to sit down. Juan, it's on to you, buddy.
All right, sounds good. Well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining, and hopefully, everybody can hear me. Does everybody, can you hear me okay on your end?
Yeah, I think we're good.
All right, excellent. I just want to confirm that you're also able to see my cursor moving in the circle, in the middle of the screen, in the circle?
Yes.
Excellent. And I'm going to take it to full screen as well to, hopefully, that makes it a little bit better for everybody to see. Excellent. Well, thanks again for joining, giving us the opportunity to demonstrate that Paychex Flex technology can, and in today's demonstration, you'll be able to see that the Paychex Flex system is modern and easy to use. This is a cloud-based online system that you would be able to access from anywhere that you may be using any device that has an internet connection. So, you could always use your computer, a tablet, or even on the go using your mobile device. This is, as Jeff mentioned, this is a full human capital management system. So, we have solutions available from hiring, applicant tracking, to hiring the employee, to managing the entire employee lifecycle until the employee retiring or offloading from your organization. So, as an administrator, when you first log into the system, you're going to log into this screen. This is the administrative dashboard. From here, you're going to be able to access all of your employees by clicking on an employee icon over on the top right. On the top left-hand side of the screen is the menu of all the products and services that we offer within the system. As mentioned, Jeff, you know, we have a lot of capability, we have a lot of scalability as well. So, this is where you're going to work with the Paychex team to really determine which option you would like to turn on from day one. The options that you don't choose, no worries, they're not going to appear on your system. We will not set them up. But just know that our system can grow with you and your organization in the future. So, these items that you don't choose today, later on, they could always be added and be part of the system in the future. And then right here in the middle, you'll find the dashboard that consists of several tiles that provide different information. As Jeff mentioned, Paychex is based on customer service, so I like to bring your attention to the tile on the top right. That's where you're going to be able to find that assigned representative, that dedicated support from day one. So, your account representative, this is going to be your partner, they're going to get to know each one of you, the admin, their roles, their responsibilities, and your organization. So, whenever you have any questions, there's just one phone call, one email away as well. So, to start today's conversation, and where we can definitely help, I wanted to start the conversation from the onboarding standpoint. So, in some of those conversations that we've had with Trish, and Lisa, and Scott, we were able to identify that currently, when you hire a brand-new person into the organization, it's a lot of manual forms that are presented to the new hires. Well, here at Paychex, we can definitely streamline that process and make that process out electronic. To simply do that from an administrator's standpoint, I would just simply go over to the top right, click on the employee icon, and click on Add. The system here is going to take me through a wizard, showing me every step of the way, how I need to complete this information. So, for this example, I can just choose I'm going to be doing an employee W2. I'm going to come in and just populate their name and email address. Now, I can move to the next section where I can identify which I would like this particular new hire to complete during this electronic process. So, it can be customized from one new hire to another, giving you that flexibility to tailor the process to your specific needs. So, right here, as an example, I'm going to go ahead and select, say, taxes. When I click on Finish, Save and Finish Later, that's going to go ahead and send an email to the applicant. The applicant will be able to receive the email, click on the link, and then they'll be brought into the onboarding process. This onboarding process can be completed from their cell phone, from a mobile device. And right here is the list of the items that your new hire would complete. So, it's going to make it easy for your new hires to complete this process. It's going to give them a rich first impression of your organization, and now your admins will not have to go looking for that paperwork. They will not have to key in the information from forms that the new hire completed. All of the information captured during this process will automatically flow into the employee record that's created for that new hire. So, as you can see, they can sign up for direct deposit, they can complete their I9. If there's additional documentation, which I know there is when it comes to policies being acknowledged, your admins can add many forms and policies that the new hire can complete right here. So, they can complete all of those, along with every other item on here. So, it makes it nice and convenient, not only for your new hire, but also for you overall. Lisa, also, Leanne, I believe you wanted to take a comment how the HR business partner would be able to assist here.
Absolutely. So, from an onboarding perspective, that's one of the ways that HR VPs were definitely pop in and support. Obviously, the technology really streamlines the process that the employee is going through, as well as you, to get all of that documentation in. But the HR VP is going to be there to make sure that all the onboarding docs are correct, right? They've been updated with the current version. As we're looking at kind of those policies that we're assigning, we're going to make sure that the handbook has been updated. Things tend to change quickly. From the compliance side of the house, we have not only your HR VP supporting you, but we have over 200 compliance analysts that are backing that up, making sure that we're tracking state and local laws on that perspective. So, we'll have those handbooks updated for you, get those rolled out through the orientation process and the onboarding process. You know, then taking a look really at, you know, the learning side of the house too. So, you know, we're going to peek quickly into the learning management system, and we can tackle those non-abasment trainings right up front for new employees coming on board. We can even create a program that has specific safety training for that specific role. The other individual that you would have access to through this program would be a safety OSHA expert. And that individual is just really there to make sure that you have everything you need from the safety side, the recommended training, the safety manuals, any ongoing questions, you'd have access to them as well. So, a lot of support here to kind of pop in and make sure that you're in compliance here, you have what you need, and, you know, other ways that we would kind of pop into the system as well and help you utilize it.
Excellent. Thank you, Leanne. Now, as the employee completes that onboarding process, as an administrator, I can come back to the employee icon, being able to see all of my active employees, terminated, on-leash employees. I can scroll through to that active employee list, look at that employee or any other active employee. This is going to be that electronic profile for the employee. So, if I bring things specific to David Rose in this particular case, I have access to all of the employee conversations that the manager had stored for the employee. There's some electronic document storage here as well, performance and compensation history, pay period deductions, custom fields, and much, much more that we can definitely dive into. But once the employee is active in the system, they're going to have an opportunity to also leverage the system by registering and having access. So, we're going to change gears here, and we're going to show you what the employee experience would be when they log into the system. So, this is me as an employee of the organization. They can access it from a computer, but also from a mobile device. So, right here on the screen, I brought over my iPhone. I've downloaded the app. The app is available both in Android and Apple stores, it's highly rated. Your employees are going to receive the same experience that they would whether they're accessing it from a computer or a mobile device. As an example, it's very similar, they're going to get that same experience. Your company logo, it's the same right there over on the left. And this menu that you see on the computer is right here on my phone when I click on the three lines. So, they're going to be able to navigate this system very easily, to capture all of the information, and it's just going to free up your admin, because now they will no longer have those employee interruptions or the interruptions that go to the management team. Now, as an employee, through their self-service access, they're going to have more than 30 standard self-service functions available that they can access at any time, such as the ability to make quick changes to personal information, including direct deposit taxes. So, that's going to remove that burden of processing paperwork for your admin and manually entering the data into the system. Also, we have many different ways to capture employee time. So, we're going to be able to help you when it comes from a time and attendance standpoint, whether you would like the employee to clock in from a mobile device or a computer, they would be able to capture that time as well. So, as an example, as I return back to my cell phone right here, there is a tile where now an employee can go ahead and clock in from their mobile device. So, as you can see here on my phone, I've been working since 1:30 Pacific, and I can go ahead and clock out for the remaining of the day. I could stop my break. I could also transfer to different grants or departments within the organization if we want to keep track of the labor cost by grant, by department. So, we're going to set up those particular dynamic parameters to meet your specific needs as well. And with the mobile punching, our system does have the capability to do GPS-based geo-sensing, so they have to be within the property of your office, of your location, in order to clock in, and not down the street at home or at Starbucks while they pick up their lunch. So, that's definitely some advantages of our system, to keep employees accountable, but also to help alleviate some of the interruptions for your administration, your management staff throughout the day. And then one last item that I want to show from an employee standpoint, the time off tile right here, we are going to be able to keep track of all of your different approvals. So, we can set up multiple different versions of your sick policies, vacation, personal days, admin leaves. We're going to definitely get copies of those policies, we're going to implement them for your employees, and in our system, we'll be able to keep track and present those current balances to your employees. Not only, we're going to keep track of those balances, now your employees have an easy way to come in and request time off at any time, making it simple and convenient. For example, they can choose the option for a vacation, as an example, they can enter the date range, maybe a note as to why they need that time off, and then go ahead and hit submit. So, that's going to be a very simple process. Now, your manager or the meeting manager of the employee would be able to receive a notification, whether that's email, text, they would be able to go to review the request and either approve it or deny it. And then the employee could also see the status of their request, and then also be able to see a history of their balances. So, maybe they have questions of how they've approved use time over the last several months, the last year. They have that same functionality where they can definitely look at that information on the fly from their phone or computer. Excellent. Now, once employees clock in, whether it's from a computer, a mobile device, we also can provide physical time clock where an employee can clock in from a proximity card or badge, that can also be possible. Now, from the administrative standpoint, or the manager's standpoint, we're going to be able to come back, right here on the administrative dashboard, your managers and your admin are going to have an option for time and attendance. When they go into that particular section, this is where they're going to be able to see everything real-time. So, during the implementation process, we're going to set up all of your rules and options in the time and attendance section of the system. This is where you're going to be able to select, pick and choose which alert you would like to go out to notify your managers. If you would like to also set up schedules within the system, you definitely can. You may also schedule reports to run on a daily or weekly basis and email those reports to management and HR staff. You will have the ability to actively control costs while minimizing the risk to the organization and keeping your employees accountable. So, as you can see on the main time and attendance dashboard, this is the control center for your managers and for your administrators. They have real-time analytics, so they can currently see on the employee status board who's currently working, who's on break, and who's already clocked out for the day. Also, they have the ability to see time off paths. What are the things that need their attention, that they need to review? So, as the manager, as an administrator, I can see the request for time off that my employees have submitted. So, managers will only see requests for their direct reports versus an admin would be able to see all requests for all employees in all departments. And then down below, I can also see those action items, employees who are absent, employees who are late or had a missing punch. This is where we want those managers to have access, to review those exceptions, fix those missing punches. So, at the end of the pay period, it's more accurate, more efficient, and we can then process the payroll as well. As I move through the different sections, when it comes to the time off, a little bit more visibility into the time off request. So, as you can see here, over on the left-hand side, I have a list of those new requests that I need to review. Over on the right, I have a calendar view into the visibility, so I can look at who the requests that have already been approved or are still pending for approval, to ensure that I have the proper coverage to run the organization. As an organization, we can add in our company holidays. Those can be listed here on the calendar view. And during our busy season, we can also add in blackout days that will prevent employees from submitting time off requests. So, you can definitely ensure that you have the proper staff to run the business without losing a beat. But this also will improve communication between employees, managers, and also overall within the organization. And as I click on one of these requests, I can see the details of the request, I can approve or deny the request. I could also do a partial approval. But once I did submit, employee would be notified that I reviewed, took care of the request, and the days that I did approve, that would automatically update the employee time card. So, it makes it nice and convenient for your employees and overall for the management team. And then you also have full visibility into the employee time cards. So, on the left-hand side, you have a list of all of your employees. I can simply go ahead and click on an employee name. And then right here in the middle, I'm able to see the employee punches, the time card for every punch throughout the week. I can collapse a particular day, so I can see the individual punches. Now, the system will automatically calculate regular hours, overtime hours, even double time. So, we can set up those parameters for you, so you're going to be able to see totals by day, by pay period, and, you know, as the manager, they could come in here and make a correction if there's some allocation that's incorrect, or they need to manually put in some time or a correction they need to make. We have that ability. But we can also make sure that, we can require them to enter a note in case they need to make an adjustment, so they can let us know why that change was made. So, there's a full audit trail. If any changes are made, who made that change? So, if you ever need to go back and look at that audit trail, it's fully available, you can run reports, you can see that information through the system. So, we'll be able to set up those different rules and policies based on your union, and you have the different departments, the different groups of employees to accommodate all of those different parameters. At the end of the pay period, this is where your managers come in to review their direct reports and their total hours. So, this is a quick way for your managers to come in and approve their employee time cards. Also, we're able to set up a column for admins to review and approve time card. Not necessary, but it's an option, if you like. We could also add in an option where the employee could also approve their time card, just as another second layer of approval. You know, just to make sure we confirm that the time card that they submitted is accurate and everything looks good, and we get their confirmation. Now, at this particular point, from an admin standpoint, the person responsible for running payroll could also follow up with the managers to make sure that they're approving their employee time card. If a manager is away on vacation, an admin could always approve time cards or have another manager fill in for that manager on vacation. Now, from this standpoint, we can definitely set up shift differentials, weekends, holiday pay, where the system can manually calculate, add those options in. If an employee works in multiple departments, and the employee, when they work in another department, if they get a different rate associated to that department because they don't fill in, we can attach a rate that is different than their standard rate to automatically apply as well. So, there's different options that we can, parameters that we can set up, and we'll definitely do that during the implementation process when we set up your time and attendance solution. Now, one of the best parts about the system, because it's all under one roof, all of the approved hours that were approved hours that were confirmed from this standpoint, that's all going to push the hours over to the payroll center. So no longer would somebody, your admin, need to key in information, manually transfer information, all of this information just populate seamlessly through the system. So that's going to save time, it's going to make it more efficient and more accurate. There's less manual adjustments in that process. So as we move into the payroll center, this is where your administrator would be able to push the hours over. Now, the system is automatically going to give us the next payday on calendar. So in this particular case, my next payday is this Friday, the first. So it automatically provides the status as in progress because the system recognizes that I transferred the hours over for a time in attendance. Now, also, our system is flexible. It's able to manage multiple payrolls on this single dashboard. So if you need to open an additional payroll or like a bonus, or maybe there's a different time period for a particular group or a particular department, we can definitely add those and it's very flexible, very easy for us to manage, making it easy for you to process those payrolls. But as I continue with my standard payroll, as I click on resume, this is going to bring me into the payroll grid where now your payroll admin is going to be able to customize the grid. They're going to be able to indicate what columns they want, what earnings they like. We're going to be able to customize and put in the earnings for your specific organization. So maybe that's where your employees, when they view the earnings that they're being paid on their pay stub, it's nice and detailed, it applies to your organization. So we can customize it that way. And then your payroll admin can have different layouts depending on the information they're going to review. So if they want a layout for longevity, if they want to see that special pay, if they want to see the overtime, the double time, the regular hours, they can definitely customize those different layouts. They can definitely filter for any particular group of employees, employee type or a particular department. And then they're going to be able to see the breakdown. So if there was different allocation, that allocation that was taken in the time in attendance system, that's going to populate right into the payroll grid. So as an example, right here for Alyssa, we're able to break down her allocation. So she has 30 hours work for the grant under federal, and then she has 10 hours work that was applied to the grant at the state level. So we're going to be able to show that level of detail. That detail is going to flow into the employee pay stub so they can see that when the hours were allocated. That's going to then flow into your reporting so you can see that cost per grant or type department. And then that's also going to flow into your accounting system, into your general ledger as well. So that way accounting and finance can allocate those wages correctly. And then also, your payroll administrator can come in and add in any bonus, any commission as a one-time adjustment if need be. So if there's any retro pay that needs to be added, maybe an employee had an increase in the middle of the pay period, they can come in and adjust as necessary. Also, an employee can be paid multiple checks if necessary. So if we want to issue a secondary check for an employee to pay a longevity, add separate jobs, just to make it a little bit more clear, we have that capability. So you can import information from a spreadsheet. So if there's a special calculation, a special pay that you would like to import under more options, you can definitely import payroll data that is, you know, maybe coming up from another source, that can definitely happen. And then you have your payroll portals over on the top right. But once we go to the final process in the payroll, we can come in here, your payroll admin can run several pre-processing reports to make sure that everything looks good. They have the ability to see the information by totals. They can also see individuals not being paid. Maybe these are individuals that are active, that are not receiving the check. This is a quick way to make sure nobody fell into the trap and maybe not be paid. So if everything looks good, they can go ahead and submit. If they find something is missing or if there's a last minute change, they can always go back and edit the payroll. But as soon as they submit, that's going to send the payroll to paychecks for processing. One advantage of also processing with us is that we're going to be able to handle all of your direct deposit transactions. So all of those employees who have elected to receive a direct deposit transaction, we're going to send those to the employee banks. We're going to also handle all of your garnishment payments, those child support, those tax levies. We're going to send them to the proper agency on behalf of your organization and the employees. We're going to collect and pay the taxes, the federal, the state. We're going to go ahead and make those payments on your behalf. Live chat, we're going to stuff up and seal them and then into envelopes, and then we're going to overnight them to you so you can hand out to those employees. So that's going to eliminate a lot of the work from your admin. That's going to save time and that's going to ensure that it's also done timely, accurately. This is what we do for all of our clients as well.
Hey Juan, can you just hold on a second? Do anybody have any questions so far? I know we're moving pretty quick because we have an hour, and I'm trying to show as much about the system, but this might be a good time just to stop real quick before we continue. Any questions, anything that you'd like to maybe see a little bit more and or deeper?
I actually have a question. So the current system that we have, how does this overlay over the top of that, or is this a, is this a replacement for what the current?
Part of this, yeah, part of this solution would be a replacement. We could work alongside of it as well. So as I said earlier, there are different pieces that we can plug in and assist with. So from this perspective with like the self-service, with the tax remittance, with some of the payroll functionalities within time in attendance, that would replace what you currently have if you chose to. Or if there were certain components that you wanted to keep, like the timekeeping, for example, we could assist on the payroll. And as Juan was saying, we have the ability to import, export files out of Cronos or UKG and then pull them right into Flex. So there's more, I think there's, there could be more conversations surrounding that, showing you some of those additional functions if you'd like to see. I'm not sure if we have time today to do that, but that could certainly be other pieces that we could help out with as you move forward.
So the current system that we have integrates with Munis for our payroll.
Correct.
For our accounting system. Does this replace both UKG and Munis?
This would replace some of those pieces that you have right now. So within, so within Munis, is Munis strictly payroll? Is Munis strictly that accounting software that you have, or is there other things built into that?
Munis is all of our accounting and it takes care of the paycheck part of the payroll.
Yeah, so this would, so this would look to replace that if you chose to.
It would replace the accounting software as well?
The payroll piece.
So we would still have?
The accounting, yeah, so as Juan was saying before with like the ledger, there's some import-export functionality for payroll-related items that can come out of paychecks and dump right into Munis.
So we would have to add paychecks to the two current systems that we have?
Not necessarily. I, I think we're going to go down a different rabbit hole at this point. Maybe we can sidebar that just to allow us to kind of show you what else we're doing here. But that would be a conversation that maybe you and I could have, and then we could report back to you on that.
One other question. Juan had talked about an administrator. Is that administrator that works for the town or works in parks?
Yeah, so an administrator would be someone that would be kind of in the system, remitting payroll, handling the collection of hours, and then inputting everything into paychecks flex. So different organizations may have different supervisors or admins. There's different levels that you can grant admins to as well. So if you wanted to have an admin, say for parks and recreation, only have access to his or her department and not the company as a whole, or the town as a whole, excuse me, you could assign different levels of access within the flex system.
So we currently have a payroll employee. Would this be our administrator then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Is that, would that be like a Lisa for example?
Lisa, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll circle back with you on some of those things.
I don't want to hog up all the time here, but go ahead.
All right. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I guess I just kind of spun it off of what Paul was talking about, you know, the reference to payroll admin or admins. I think Paul got the answer that was kind of in my mind, you know, are we creating payroll admins within every entity in town government, or is the payroll admin, the payroll clerk, we become accustomed to using? I think you answered that question. So I'll defer to Paul when it comes to, you know, the conversation regarding Cronos, UKG, the talent staff. I mean, you know, our existing system is a standalone system that, in my opinion, I'm not looking to replace.
Yep.
Is well-established in our department and used essentially, one of the vitals we refer to in our department that allows us to function.
Yep.
So, you know, the integration between our scheduling system, telestaff, with UKG, Cronos, and now transitioning into mentions, a lot of what you've laid out here is essentially redundant to what we have and what we are currently in process of upgrading. So, you know, just want to make sure we may add in front of that.
Yep. I understand. Yeah, I mean, one of the things that we did talk about is that with your time system in the, in the police department, for example, you could choose to keep that, we could export a file out, you know, put it into Flex. But some of the other things that, you know, Juan showed, for example, with some of the self-service, with some of the other pieces that it can provide, that may enhance what you guys currently have right now. There are other departments or other groupings per se that could use time in attendance from a silo perspective, but those are all the things that we can continue to explore as we move forward.
Everything you laid out here when it comes to what you were referring to there, we currently have provided to us through telestaff and transitioning into mentions. So excellent bells and whistles, but something that our department is fully accustomed to and has been since we integrated.
Perfect, okay. I know, again, I'm just watching that clock and I'm trying to be respectful of the time here. So if it's okay with you, can I turn it back to Juan and have him continue going through? Okay.
And Jeff, I just wanted to make sure, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. I just saw that Alde Orter, Alexa meeting, and I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, you just slapped that, yep.
Okay. Excellent. So once we complete the payroll processing, I did want to change gears to kind of show you some of the HR IS system capabilities within our system. So over on the left-hand side, so as an administrator, you know, somebody from your organization that may be a manager or somebody from the HR department would be able to come over to the left-hand side and click on documents. So for those active employees, employees that have already been with your organization, this is our document management solution. And this is where you're going to be able to share unlimited forms and policies with your employees to track and collect electronic signatures and acknowledgements on new forms and policies that you're handing out. So as an example, to kind of give you a real-life scenario of how paychecks can be that one-stop shop, earlier, Leanne was talking about your dedicated HR business partner being able to work with your HR team to come in and update employee handbook. So, you know, that HR business partner could, would ensure that the employee handbook is updated with all new regulations and laws. And then they would also point you now to the technology, point you to this area that would now let you know that through the technology, you would be able to upload a copy of that new version of the employee handbook and then send it out to all of your employees and have the HR staff now monitor how many employees have yet to acknowledge it. So right here, if I go into the activity of the employee handbook, I can see 52 employees have yet to acknowledge. I'm able to send a reminder. I can choose how to send the reminder, one or all four of these options. I can do it internally. And for the employees who have acknowledged, a copy of that employee handbook would be stored under the employee file, under their electronic employee storage. So if ever you need to go back and reference, if, you know, for compliance reasons, this is a good way to keep track of everything through the system. No longer do you have to send it through email or through another method. It's all tracked here within the system and you can allocate it. Anything else you'd like to add in here, Leanne, how it could help from a data standpoint?
Yeah, I think the compliance side, not how it's from, you know, the handbook and definitely being proactive, I think that's one of the things that's different about paychecks, that we're not waiting for you to come to us and say, hey, listen, I heard this is happening and we need to get this added into our handbook. We're reaching out and saying, this is happening, it does impact you, let us help you implement this. Whether that be a handbook policy, you know, or, you know, a new training that might need to be done. I did want to say too, from the training side of the house, I talked about that briefly before, one of the things that's included in this suite of services would be management development as well. So just one of those things that you can kind of take advantage of as much as you want or as little as you want, that could be included here as well. And then I guess the last piece is, you know, here from surveys and, you know, we do surveys through here and get feedback from, you know, everybody, you know, all of the employees and help you implement what those, you know, surveys are telling you, is it additional, you know, benefits that they want to see, or, you know, is it something about management that we can help with from a training perspective? Whatever you're looking to kind of get a pulse on, you can do that through here. And then, you know, we can do professional development in here as well. If you want to give your employees access to kind of develop themselves and learn on their own, we can help you create programs. Maybe you'll have people that are looking to get into supervisory role and you want to, you know, kind of take, it's going to take what supervisory really means, right? Give them a few little trainings in here to get an understanding of what does this mean and what am I getting myself into? So that they're prepared once they start taking those roles. So a lot here that we can do from the learning perspective. And again, it really speaks on you and it speaks on the employees that you have. Some people like it to be instructor-led, some people like it online. So we'll really work with you to navigate all of what paychecks have to offer to make it an impactful training strategy for you and all of your employees. Thanks, Juan.
No problem. And to add to Leanne and the learning management system that comes with the system is that now you can assign specific courses to your employees or you let them browse topics at their leisure. So this is going to help them develop the skills and knowledge that they need to succeed and drive better results for your organization. When you assign a training to the employees, the system is going to send a notification to them, letting them know that you've assigned a training or training. Managers also receive weekly summaries on their direct reports to ensure that the trainings are being completed and that the organization is compliant. And as mentioned, there's also survey feature here that lets you gather anonymous feedback to help you pinpoint strengths and weaknesses within your organization. So that way you can take the necessary actions to address areas. So maybe you send out a survey, you use the technology to collect that information. Once you collect that information, you can then turn around and meet with your paycheck, HR business partner to evaluate with them. They can sit down, evaluate, and then they can give you recommendations on how to improve employee morale, how to include those concerns, improve those weaknesses, and now make them strengths. And from an employee standpoint, now I can come in here through my employee self-service, I can see the trainees that need my attention, the ones that are required, the ones that I was able to browse and I chose to take on, I can go in and see those. And then I can also see the training, oh, the trainings that I've completed over the years here. And then I can also see the training, oh, the trainings that I've completed over the years here. So I can definitely see that information. I can start a training and need it completed online during some downtime or during scheduled training time. I have that capability through the system. And as an administrator, you are gonna have all of those analytics where you can come back and analyze the information from a holistic standpoint. So you're gonna be able to see your learning status, how many overdue learners you have, what are the completion rates? You can also come in here and create new programs. With the help of your HR business partner, you could have a program for accounting where maybe a program consists of five trainings. You could have another program for a different department or type of employee position. So you have the analytics here to drive forward. You could build quizzes and tests as part of this process to confirm that they really paid attention to the training that they were taking and they captured the, the knowledge and the information. So that's all part of the system that you can definitely take advantage to move your work staff moving forward and improve their skills. And then as we discuss the HR-related information, I went ahead and clicked on human resources. In this section, we're just gonna be able to expand, give you more capabilities where now your management team, your HR staff can come in here and see live analytics when it comes to your employees. So they can see information on demographics. My understanding is they also need some labor statistics versus, you know, uh, male, female. They can come in and see those. How are you communicating with different generations in your workplace? Uh, what are you gonna do when the, you identify that six employees are over the age of 60? What are we gonna do in backfield positions when they retire? So this is great analytics that you're gonna be able to now take and make informed decisions, uh, moving forward. Also being able to see a headcount on, and being able to dive in turnover. You're experiencing some turnover. Let's look into the specifics. Is that a specific department? Is that a specific group of employees? That's some great analytics that you can do. Performance reviews. You can come in here and improve employer retention by giving your employees that consistent feedback on the impact they are having with the organization. You can gather performance feedback from the employee, uh, from their managers. You can also get feedback on the employee from the employee themselves or, and their peers as well. So you can get a full 360 view of the employee's accomplishments. Notifications are sent out to employees for them to acknowledge a review that their manager has completed. Managers also have the ability to come in here and complete those. So from a manager's standpoint, they do have a tab here where the system is gonna inform them when those new reviews are due. So they can come in here and complete those right from their phone, right from their computer. And your HR staff, with the help of the paycheck HR business partner, can set up the different templates, the different frequencies. Maybe they want to do an employee evaluation at 60, 90 days, they can do that. Monthly reviews, monthly check-ins, all of that can be accomplished through the system. Calendar events. Automatically the system will notify you of birthdays and anniversaries, but the event calendar will support employee engagement retention efforts where you can come in here with the ability to share announcements, reminders, deadlines, invitations to board meetings, company meetings, location meetings, celebrating your workforce, fostering transparency, promoting your mission as well. So definitely just giving a little bit more insight. And then also, uh, from an employee standpoint, having the ability for employees to communicate, having that open door policy through the system where you're gonna help your employees, they connected and productive in the workplace environment with the ability to submit issues, incidents, questions, requests and others. And this is gonna be routed to the Davisian Native Administrators Management for response. As administrators, they're gonna have the ability to come in here and review those submissions. So they're gonna be able to leverage the technology here to address employee concerns. Power-type safety meet OSHA requirements. Maybe they're gonna be able to tighten those controls and provide safer employee environment. So as an example, I had an employee incident, the employee fell back on Cinco de Mayo. I can list all of those details. And then I can also capture if the employee went on leave, if the employee incident is OSHA reportable, if it's workers' health related, uh, what attachments, what documentation is related to this issue, activity that we've done. And then if the employee truly did get injured, totally, that never happens in your organization, we're gonna be able to capture those injury details, where they've got the treatment. And all of that information being captured is gonna populate and then OSHA 301 form. So that way your HR staff can populate and download that form easily, quickly so they can get that configured and filed away. Right here is a quick example of how we're able to populate that information right on the form with the information stored in the system. So again, just making it easy for your managers, your employees to communicate in a workplace that is, you know, got and evolving. Uh, so that's with our issues and incidents. And then also last but not least, we also can help with our compliance assistance. So paychecks rule wants to help you reduce that risk. We're also able to track OSHA, EEO one data. So as an example, if you're, if you wanted to run some EEO information, your administrator can run the information, can request the information to go out to all employees or just employees missing information. And then you can preview the survey that goes out to the employees. So employees would be notified when you send out the survey and then you would be able to send that back. So again, just giving you those capabilities so you can come in, review the information. And like Leanne said, we want to help you pay compliance, minimize risk, but also leverage the technology that it's all under one house. So you can leverage the information moving from one section to another. Sometimes what we're hearing a lot is that a lot of clients are using multiple systems. So they're having to enter multiple employee information in multiple systems that redundancy, that multiple manual data entry. Having it all under one system like you see here, from hire to retire, that's gonna alleviate, make that process more efficient. The data's gonna be more accurate. And then that way your admin staff, your management staff can really focus on having greater control within your organization.
Hey Juan, real quick, 'cause I know we're just about out of time. Uh, Leanne, I know you wanted to hop in and say something. Do you have a second still?
Yeah, so I think, you know, looking at the analytics here, like, and you brought up a lot of great points of what does data, you know, really tell us? And part of the role of the HRBP is to help you really analyze all that information and come up with a plan on how to handle those things. Like you said, you might have to have people retiring out, we have to come up with succession planning. Uh, you know, you might be struggling, uh, from a headcount and turnover perspective with under one manager, maybe we need some development there. So that HRBP is there to plug in and support those items. Um, they're there to do, you know, coaching with managers, progressive discipline, make sure we're getting all of those things documented. There's a lot of great leads to document through the system as well. Um, and training managers are what they're supposed to be looking for. So there's a lot of support that we can give there. The one piece that we didn't really talk about is those complex employee relationship issues. That, those do come up and when they do come up, um, that is part of the HRBP's role as well, um, to really get a, get an idea of what the risks is associated with making the decisions that you're making on that employee. So we will absolutely give a recommendation to protect the town. Um, so we'll dig in and get an understanding of what policies you have in place. What have you done, have you set precedents before? Uh, what do you have documented? Is there a performance or discipline document that will help us? So we really dig into those situations, do our own research and come back with a recommendation. Um, always your decision on how you want to see if that is free, but we want to make sure that you have everything you need to make the right decision. So happy to answer any questions on, on the HR side if anybody does. But I think that was everything Jeff, that I wanted, such as much time quickly.
Perfect.
Jeff, I have a question.
Yes.
This program that you presented here today.
Yeah, so next step, um, Gene, is I'll be back in touch with Scott. We'll kind of talk about what we showed today. And what Leanne and I will do is we'll put together pricing, uh, for the town.
Can you give me a hold? If you've brought in 3,000 customers yourself, you can kind of have them out there.
Yep. So I guess with some of the things that we talked about tonight, you know, the time and attendance, the different types of clocks, different type of, uh, punching, HR support, there's a lot of different modules that, you know, come within that. I know from an employee perspective, right around 250 employees and then it's a seasonal, right? You, you're gonna fluctuate from there. Um, I would say you're probably, you're probably around a couple grand a month uh, for a solution like this from a payroll perspective. Please don't hold me to that. I'll put that back.
And, and you have experience in working with units, you have, you have, Jeff, you have.
Yeah, so some of the things that I talked with Scott and Lisa about, um, you know, we can certainly go back into that. Uh, and, you know, if you're looking for references, uh, or if you're looking for other municipalities that also work alongside of paychecks depending on the complexities, I can certainly provide some of those to you.
I'm asking, do you have experience with, uh, this is a different, you know, contrast as well?
I've brought on clients that have had that scenario, yes.
Paul, do you have any questions?
Actually, no, I just, the things that we talked about.
I got it written down.
And then Chief, you have any questions?
Nothing additional. Just a quick question. Uh, when you said earlier that you can overlap with some of these systems such as, um, Paul, what's the, the beginning system, not you missed, but the, the?
UKG.
Before that.
Cronos.
Before that. The one the chief uses?
Telestaff.
So, so let's say they want to keep telestaff.
Yep.
Hypothetically. You can inboard, export with that and still have it be through maybe a Cronos, through a Munis and just have it spin out to you guys at the end.
Yeah, so what we would look to do at that point, and that's probably a conversation for Trish, Lisa, you and I, or possibly the, the chief, is we got to take a look at what that file looks like 'cause everything's, um, has a certain spec format. So once we take a look at that, we're not looking to recreate what you have 'cause what you, what you built from what I understand back in 2012, uh, it is working and it does its job. I'm not gonna change that, I'm not looking to change any of that process. I just want to make sure that the file coming out of that will be read and will be compatible with paychecks. But that's a, that's a next step on my end to confirm, uh, to make sure that we can work through that and work alongside that.
But just to clarify, we, we would still need to have a body here in town that would be a payroll clerk who's responsible for essentially the conduit to get you the information. That's not gonna fall on a department manager to be entering in payroll information to get to you.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yep.
Just clarify.
Yep.
Just for one last clarity, and I know we have to go. So, um, with the programs that are being used today, is there automation to this or is it manual in nature? Like when onboarding docs, are those all manual today or are they online?
All manual.
All manual. So that maybe is a piece we could plug into hypothetically.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay. So you might have 75 services or 150 services. We might plug into 10 of those hypothetically, is that fair to say?
Absolutely.
So where does that automation piece fit? So if we just, we just took that piece and said, let's use what we currently have, how does that fit into our system or doesn't?
So like, I, I think what you're looking at that is like system of record, like where does that employee data reside within Munis? Is, is that how I understand?
In, in UKG, so that, yeah.
Excuse me. Yeah, so we would, we would have to, I'm trying to respect the time, so I, I mean, I apologize if I'm a few minutes over. Um, we'd have to, we'd have to have a better understanding of where that information needs to sit. Ideally, it would sit within Paychecks Flex because everything is fed into that. And then we would have the ability to export out and or bring in information in depending on the different systems and configurations that you have.
I'll add one last thing and then I'll, I'll keep quiet. And that is, my, my interpretation is, is we should identify gaps and maybe say, if we're interested as a board and interested as a town, here are the gaps. Here's where paychecks can fill in to those gaps such as training, uh, safety training. Uh, could be, um, you know, automizing, automizing, automation of the onboarding. It could be anything we think of that they offer, we can plug in and they will say, here's how much that will cost to integrate. And figuring out how to integrate it will be all of us together if we want to go that route.
Yeah, so I, I mean, that follows up, you know, you know, the question that you asked me before is, you know, from a, from a pricing perspective, once I understand what those gaps are, once I understand what you're looking for, I can then come back and give you that price.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Leanne. Thanks, Juan.
Thank you on the call, I'm gonna hang up now.
Yep.
Have a good day.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
All right.
We're gonna, um, we're gonna break for about 10 minutes to go into the faculty session and I'd like to, uh, Chief Paul, Trish and the Chief and just have a quick 10-minute conversation.